Tell us what you're here for.
Hi.
Hi.
So I'm Heather and this is Brittany. We are the leasing tenant. We also have the owner of the property, Larry, at present. So if y'all have any additional questions on the property, then you can ask, so I may not know. So we just wanted to present you guys with this presentation. We are looking to possibly rezone from, I think it's a light industrial, to a commercial residential for a long-term use of the property. We've already had our first meeting. Everything went really, really well. So this is location 5519. We are currently, right now, housing 22 businesses inside, local to Indian Trail. So we first started our journey back January 15th of 2021, in memory of our dear friend Kimberly. And we have grown in less than a year to now housing 22 businesses. So our goal is to continue to bring Union County together with helping small business owners to continue getting backing on their feet after losing either their brick and mortar, losing their job, and whatever. And we really feel that it'd be amazing to continue to have events on this property. So this is just the property. This is one of our first original pop-ups. This is the Winter Wonderland. We housed about 45 businesses outside on the property. It was a beautiful area. It has enough parking currently, and we are looking to possibly, in the future, expand. But right now, we really want to push to continue our monthly events. We work really closely right now with probably over 12 different nonprofits in the community. So right now, my daughter and I have not paid ourselves back yet because we give about 75% of what we make from us back into our nonprofits. So we are also currently working with Turning Point to revamp and restore their domestic violence shelter park as well. So that's really our goal, to continue to grow the community, but continue to support nonprofits through this and on the property. If you want to go to the next slide, I don't know. Oh, thank you. Too far. So this is just showing the property. Right now, Larry, I don't know if your company name. So Larry and Robert are owners of the entire property. We have, through our lease agreement, that we can use it for events as well. So this is just showing the property right now. This is paved area, and then the overflow is a compacted dirt from the overflow parking. Right now, our pop-ups, we try to keep pretty reasonable so it doesn't get too crazy. We did meet with the sheriff's office as well, the captain, just to keep making sure that all of our events are staying, you know, moderate and within a safety reason. So that's kind of our goal, in that, do you have anything else to add?
No, just the fact that those white dots represent our, like, other small businesses that pop up outside. I realize that's not labeled now. And also, we did talk in our first meeting of how the overflow parking will eventually be, like, asphalted over and paved over so that there is no, like, resurfacing of mud or, like... For beautification of the property, that's the word.
You can go ahead.
Okay, so our community events and goals, like we've stated before, we give a lot back to nonprofits, and we want to continue to be able to do that. And we want to also just bring the community together. We think that Indian Trail and, like, Henby Bridge in that area has a lot to offer, and there's a lot of people who don't have, like, just the knowledge of, like, where to get together, or how to expand, or events or things. So we just want to bring more places for people to get together. We, like the PowerPoint says, like, family-friendly, a lot of fun, and just bringing more people to Indian Trail. Like, we've had people travel just to come to one of our pop-up markets.
Two hours away.
Yeah, and we've done, um, through, at the park, uh, crossing past Park in Indian Trail, and we ran all that through Parks and Rec. And now that we have our own storefront, we love to be able to continue growing through that as well.
And then the website, there is our another website, shopatthepark.com. That's where all of our events are housed. So the town, anyone that has public knowledge, where you guys can click on and see everything we do. You can see all the businesses. You can also see all the partner nonprofits we are with as well. And then this is just kind of showing the flow of traffic. So right now, we have a very basic sign that just kind of shows them that the overflow parking is in the back. You can see there's no major safety hazards or issues. Because we keep it at a pretty solid minimum, we have enough parking in that back area to be able to house. And because our events aren't not, they're not like a concert where everybody stays and gathers all at one time, it's kind of a come-and-go throughout a 10-to-4 time period. So we really feel that if rezoning to the commercial slash residential or retail would really give it an extra boost to be able to continue our events on a monthly basis. And that's just some of our goals as well. So main, you know, main goal is to have events every month. We obviously do our proper permits for each event. We go through Brandy and Crystal. And then our other goal is safety, traffic flow, promote togetherness, community growth, and local. And that's all we ask, so. No, that's just future plans. We had presented with Brandy and them, but that's for later with the owners eventually down the road, so.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions? Anybody? Any questions?
Marcus? Just trying to, thank you. And I actually know Larry, the owner. How are you doing, Larry? I'm good, sir, I'm good. The address is on Stinson Hardest, the 5523.
That's a different address, so that's their other business?
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm trying to figure out the location of it, just from my one.
5519 Indian Trail, Fairview Road, but to access it, you have to turn on Stinson Hardest.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Near the library, correct?
Yeah, once that new bypass was put in, because of the hazard of people coming off of that exit, they closed off that main entrance.
Okay.
And now you have to exit through the back, which is safety.
All right, I understand that, yeah. And so based on what I'm seeing there, there's no construction with the exception of the paving of the gravel lot right now, or the compacted, right? That's the only planned construction?
Yep. Yeah, for future downward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Crystal, I don't think you probably, you probably don't have any questions, do you?
I don't, I reviewed it a little bit.
Okay. You're good? All right, good. Well, listen, thank you for coming. We appreciate it, and wish you all the luck in the world, so.
Thank you very much.
Nice to see y'all.
Okay, I need a motion to adjourn the 5:30.
Are we going to go into closed session?
Okay. I don't know if anybody's aware of it, but we're going into closed session. So I need a motion to go into closed session.
Consult with the attorney.
Motion to go into closed session.
Mr. McIntyre's made a motion, all in favor? Unanimous? Marcus has made a motion, all in favor? Unanimous? Okay, we're good.
And to close the...
And to close the meeting.
A motion to close the meeting.
A motion to close the meeting.
I motion to close the workshop meeting.
Oh, I got you, thank you. I thought we'd already done that, I'm sorry.
We closed the closed session, we closed the meeting.
I'm learning.
You got it.
I like that. 6:30, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Indian Trail Town Council Meeting, Tuesday, March 8th, 2022. If we'd all stand up for the pledge of allegiance. Tom, you want to lead us?
Absolutely. We are the citizens of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Would all remain standing for a moment of silence? May be seated. Okay, do I have any additions or deletions?
Do I have a motion to...
Yeah, addition, add item 11D authorization to open three new NCCMT accounts.
And that was what, 11?
11D, as in David.
Got you. Anyone else have any? Okay. I need a motion to approve the changes to the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
All in favor? Mr. McIntyre's made the motion.
Excuse me, mayor. We are, we are having a new protocol, so we are going to motion to add item 11D, and then we just a motion to approve the meeting. So can we have one motion to add the item?
So I'll make a motion to approve item 11D authorization to open three new NCCMT accounts to the agenda.
Okay, all in favor?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
All in favor? Unanimous? Okay, that brings us, we don't, we've already had our closed session, so we don't need to go through the closed session. Brings us to presentations. Chris, do we have a camera here? Who's going to be our cameraman and our camera woman? Okay, we're going to have a group photo by the council. So you want us to gather around the...
That's perfect, I'm on the right, he's on the left.
I'm not going to bite you, babe.
I was going to say, it's coming, right?
That brings us to public comments. Do we have any public comments?
I think we have, Kathy, I think we have someone back there.
Okay, town rules for addressing the Indian Trail Council during meetings. These rules were established by the Indian Trail Town Board and apply to public comment participants. As a reminder, that they are read at each meeting before it's received. Please state your name, and if you are a resident of Indian Trail, clearly for the record, please elect a representative for multiple individuals having similar messages. Each speaker or representative will have three minutes to state their concerns. Comments should be directed to the entire board and not specific individuals. Speakers are to remain respectful with reasonable standards of civility. Please refrain from communicating grievances regarding town staff in this forum. We ask that you redirect those to the town manager. All documents submitted to the board become town property and may be available as requested. Anonymous general written public comments will not be read. Regarding comments from public hearings, anonymous writings will not be read. All other written public comments will be read for a restricted period of 20 minutes. After 20 minutes remaining, written comments will be noted at either opposing or supporting. Any speaker may be asked to discontinue or to be disallowed to speak by the board if rules are violated. And last, comments may be recorded and broadcasted on the internet. Okay, that brings us to Ingrid Bardals, Bardals? Did I pronounce that right?
Bardalis, but that's fine.
That was close.
Pretty close. Ingrid Bardalis, and you said my address?
No, you say your address.
1001 Forest Way Court.
Let me get you the microphone.
How about that? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
1001 Forest Way Court, Indian Trail, 28079. I just have a very simple question, and it's addressed to the three members here in the council that I helped get elected. And I have nothing, it's nothing personal against you, Mr. Cohen, but you three, Tom, Crystal, and Dennis, ran on a low-density platform. And Mr. Cohen here, he's very high-density friendly. My question is, why did you agree to elect him? Again, nothing personal against you. I don't know you, you can be a very fine gentleman, but why did that happen? That is a simple question.
No, no, don't talk, let her finish.
I moved from a big city to a small town because I enjoy that small-town feel, and it is going away. Who is going to compensate me if tomorrow I've had enough of it and decide to move? That is all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is John Early.
John Early, 4603 Jaclyn Drive, Indian Trail. I want to address the council on, first, I congratulate you, mayor, on being installed as mayor. And I say installed because you were not voted in properly. We only got one nomination, that was you. There were no more nominations. There was no advertisement for anybody to apply. It was just, this is the mayor, like it or lump it. Got nothing against you, don't know you, you're probably the nicest guy I ever want to meet. I don't know that. To Dennis Gay, Crystal, and Tom, like Ingrid was saying, you ran on a, I got a flyer right here, high-density, out-of-control development. Are you tired of it? So are we. And we sold voters on this. And why, as you look at Mr. Cohen's history on the council, he's supported high-density construction, apartment complexes and the like. Why would you put a potential tie-breaking vote against your agenda? That makes no sense to me. And you've lost all credibility. I'm sorry that I ever helped y'all get elected. And I apologize to anybody that I influenced the vote for y'all. That's all I got to say.
Thank you very much. Mr. Larry Dukes?
Good evening. I'd like to thank the, my name is Larry Dukes, 5001 Magna Lane, Indian Trail. I'm a resident. I'd like to thank the town council for their dedication to the city of Indian Trail. I would like to just bring up, as I've been reviewing the Indian Trail website, looking at the different proposals that have been out there, the projects that have been listed out there. I see them listed, but it's really hard to tell what's been approved, what's been, when it was approved, what the status is. And I would like to highly recommend that the website or some sort of consolidation be shown and have more of a transparency so that people can see where everything's at. There's a lot of requirements that are coming up to the city right now from both residential and commercial. I know a lot of those, and some of the things that I do take a long time. Some of those have been approved a long time ago, and they sit there for a lot of reasons, for other things to be approved and taken care of. So I think it would be very helpful for all the residents of the city to understand where those projects are and have something that's a little bit more easy to read and see than it is the way the current website shows it today. So thank you, that's what I'm asking for.
Very good, Larry. Thank you for giving us those comments. Do we have anyone to, a council member like to, council feedback? Any one of you like to say anything? If you do, raise your hand, so we, Tom?
Yeah. I want to address a disappointing Mayor Cohen. You know, I get what you're saying about the high-density. That was the past council that did that. I still haven't changed my philosophies on that. I'm still low-density, I had a crawl, if you will. However, my thought process was, when I, I'm the one that reached out to David Cohen initially, guys. But I did it based on experience. The gentleman's been involved with the town for 10 years. I didn't know of anyone else that could have stepped in as a new mayor after the death of Michael, that I know of, okay? Did I think much about the, what he voted for on high-density projects? Maybe I dropped the ball on that. However, however, I don't plan on missing any meetings. My vote will always be what I ran on, and I'm all about for the people of Indian Trail. So I'm not, you know, trying to sit up here and be apologetic. I thought I made a right decision based on the future of Indian Trail, not for the developers, perhaps. You know, I did it because I felt he was the right man for the job at this time. He's only up for another two years. His, he'll be out there campaigning to see if he can get re-elected, and that's up to the public. But that's, that's the reason I did it. And if I made a mistake, I guess only time will tell. God bless you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
None of us planned on Michael Alvarez passing away. So the decision was thrust upon us, whether we ran to be elected or whatever, we all anticipated that Michael Alvarez would be our mayor. But given the circumstances and the unexpected death of the mayor, I've worked with Mr. Cohen. I find his professionalism integrity outstanding. I trust Mr. Cohen, and I'm proud to have Mr. Cohen as my mayor. Thank you.
Agreed.
I've already caught the brunt of this earlier, so I knew it was coming tonight. But you'll find that I'm going to stick with my low-density, commercial, light-industrial plans and just see how I vote. That's all I can tell you. And I'm sorry that I disappointed you.
Anything, Marcus? Matt, Crystal, you?
I'm just going to say, I agree. Hopefully David does have the experience, and he's been here. And Clay Thompson said, I don't plan on missing, I don't plan on...
Her mic's not on.
Okay, well, I don't plan on missing any of them, and I do stand low-density. I'm 100% you know, towards low-density. So I hope that over the next two years, I can prove myself to you.
Okay, my turn. And I'd like to say a couple of things. First of all, you're right. You don't know me. Neither one of you know me. And I'm glad you agree to that, because you really have no idea what I voted on over the last 10 years. And if you did, you wouldn't say I was a high-density. It's just the opposite. You read garbage out on the internet, and then you believe garbage, and then you come in here. What you should do is get your facts straight before you come in here. I don't mean that to criticize you either. Get to know me, and get to know what I voted on. Because I can guarantee you, over the last 10 years, I've voted against more high-density than I have for high-density. And people who, people who read and want to say that I vote for high-density, it's just not true. And I voted against a lot of apartment buildings and a lot of different things. And I tell you what, my one vote didn't, didn't get anything in there, it's just me, even when I did vote for it. And I'll always vote for what I think's best for Indian Trail. I don't have any, nobody giving me money, nobody doing anything. And I'll tell you this, I've run twice, and both times that I've run, I got the most votes of any person. One time, I got the most votes of anybody in Union County. And I don't sit up here and brag about that. People who know me, and those are the people that vote for me, they know where I stand. So when you get up here and you tell me that I'm a high-density person, I'm not a high-density person. I vote for what's best for Indian Trail. And both times that I ran in the election, I never have gotten a dime from a developer, never. As a matter of fact, a developer has never even let me put my sign on their property. And the reason they don't let me do that is because I'm not a developer candidate, never have been, never will be. So with all due respect, before you come up here and say that I'm a high-density candidate, I'm a high-density person, know what you're saying. I don't mean that in a bad way, but you don't know me. Get to know me. Get to know me. Get to know who I am, instead of read about me and read about people who, talk about everybody that's up here in a bad way. That's all I got to say. I'd be happy to sit down and talk to you, and you can get to know me. So high-density, no, I'm not high-density. Have I voted for apartments? Yes. Have I voted for housing? Yes. But on most cases, no. So anyway, that's all I got to say. So let's close out, let's close out, let's close this part out, and let's move on to... Or do I need to get a vote on this?
No.
All right. Come on, law enforcement update, Captain James.
Moving on, Mr. Mayor and council, before you, I've laid the February 2022 report. Couple things, you can look over those at your leisure. But the, a couple things I wanted to point out, there's 195 reportable offenses last month, which is down from 216 in January. 502 business checks, 3,784 preventative patrols. And then on the crash side, we had 101 crashes in January, which was down, I'm sorry, in February, which was down from January. And also, our injuries are down from January to 13. So we're still attacking that injury number, that serious injury number, which is sporking. 6,307 total calls for service during the month of February, and that was up 1,300 from January. So down on some good stuff, and up on the calls for service, which is, we're going to see some fluctuations, that starts to get hot, and it'll get busy again. I'm glad answering questions for you tomorrow.
Anybody have any questions?
Yes, sir.
Tom?
Good to see y'all, the touch of truck, it was good to see Sheriff Department there. And I did have a request from a Japanese citizen. You doing the rabies clinic, when, you know, if they'll be announcing that, or...
They will, whenever, I don't know when they're going to do it, but it will, it will be posted on our website as well. It'll be given to Ms. Ball, and she'll put it out on the town's website. I think it's in spring. Yeah, I think so.
I'll tell the citizens.
Okay.
Anybody else? It was good to see y'all out there and...
Enjoy spending time with you on Saturday, too.
Spend some time out there with you, and I tell you one thing about that, and Hayden did a marvelous job, and I don't know if he's in here or not, but he did. And I walked out there expecting to see about 100 people at most, and what can, you're a good estimate. How many people you think was out there?
Over 3,000.
Over 3,000 people.
I think we had more there than we did on Spectacular for Halloween.
It was, and it was a great day. And y'all handled it very well, and, you know, wasn't any parking, but, you know, that's nobody's fault. But thank you for all you do.
Yes, sir, I appreciate that.
We appreciate it.
Thank y'all.
That brings us to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, all in favor? Mr. McIntyre's made a motion, unanimous. That brings us to public hearings. Ms. Deese, changes to the zoning map, ZM 2022 008 Union Festival Shopping Center, ordinance 3-08-22, number 371.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, mayor and council. Our first public hearing for tonight, as the mayor said, is for Union Festival Shopping Center. This is the northeast corner of Old Monroe Road and Indian Trail Road. So the request is for .47 acres off of Indian Trail Road from single-family to general business district. This parcel contains three of the commercial units in the Union Festival Shopping Center that runs perpendicular to Indian Trail Road. So more commonly known, New York Pizza and Pasta, Athenian Grill, if that helps orient you a little bit better. The intent of this request is to make this commercial strip center compliant with the code. Here's the aerial map, just showing you the location there, that one parcel. So photos here of the existing site. So the portion of the shopping center that's impacted by this request is these last three units on the very end. They've had difficulty obtaining corporate approvals and financing for tenant outfits because the parcel is zoned SF1. So we did some research, found that this was an oversight... So we did some research, found that this was an oversight back in the 80s with the county from a mapping perspective. So we have the approval showing that it was approved to be general business, commercial, and this one parcel did not get changed. So again, here on the map in red, you can see that one little parcel that's beige instead of the bluish color. And then here, future zoning sets it out to be commercial. So reviewing the details, the total site is 3.7 acres with the current request impacting 0.47 acres. Again, the amendment is for SF, to go from SF1 to general business district, and changes the zoning for this portion of the property to be consistent with the remaining portion of the shopping center. It's in line with the commercial and the future land use, as we talked about. And then you can see these neighboring uses. You know, you probably know this area well, there's a little bit of a mix there. Okay, so bear with me, I got to read the consistency findings. This development is located within the Old Monroe Village Plan. Shopping Center is among other mixed uses existing prior to the adopted Village Plans associated with the town's comprehensive plan. The proposed zoning map amendment will establish the correct zoning based on the existing land use and continue to keep the Village Center intact. This request is consistent with land use goal number one, by correcting the zoning based on the existing land use and reducing conflicts with the Unified Development Ordinance. This request is consistent with economic development goal number two, by supporting an existing business with the effect of communication and community outreach. On February 15th, 2022, plan and board unanimously recommended approval of this request with one condition. The condition stated that the applicant will not build onto or go beyond the existing building footprint or remove any existing green buffer space adjacent to the single-family residence. Staff feels very strongly that this condition is covered in the fact that the property was developed in the 1980s. So changing the color on the map does not change the structure and the fact that the structure is non-compliant. So non-conformings, you cannot expand or increase or change unless you are changing them to bring them more in line with the current code. So we feel like that, number one, the UDO already handles this, but this is also a straight rezoning, so that you cannot add conditions on to that, but I did want to share that with you. The requested action is before you tonight after we receive public hearing, and happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
I'd like to open public hearing. Do I need a motion to open public hearing? Okay, do I have a motion to open public hearing?
I make a motion to open public hearing.
I'm sorry, I don't have anybody's name.
We don't have anybody signed up, but you can ask if any members of the public would like to speak.
Somebody approaching the mic.
And you might ask her if she would like to speak and then state her name.
Yes, would Counsel like to allow, ma'am, what is your name?
Julie. Julie Post.
Julie, would Julie speak? Okay, that's good, that's good. Come on up.
What is the name, please, Julie?
Post, P-O-S-T. Yes, I'm interested in this rezoning because I live in a neighborhood. And I shared this paper I got in the mail with a neighbor, and they did not receive this letter. So I was wondering about that, why that happened. And I checked on the website, and I agree with the gentleman early about website could be a little more user-friendly, because I couldn't find any information. My concern is, is the rezoning, is that going to eventually go all the way down the road? What is that, Indian Trail Road, right in front of Rushing Park? Because right now, you have it at the corner of the existing mall area, you might call it. But how far is it going to go down? And I'm concerned about our neighborhood. Is there going to be a fence or wall to protect us from being backdoor, front door to a business? That's a concern. And of course, the road there, everybody knows it needs to be widened. It jams up, and our neighborhood is a cut-through. The people will come racing through our neighborhood, and they have kids within strollers and parents walking there, and dogs, and this is not right. We had a speed bump put up, but still, it's a cut-through, and it's just dangerous for our neighborhood. I think it's, the rezoning of this area is a good idea. I'm just concerned about how far it's going to go down in the future, and I thank you for your time.
Julie, before you leave. It is Julie.
Julie, yes.
I didn't hear your last name like...
Post.
P-O-S-T.
If you don't see anything on the website, or it's not making any sense to you, I know most of these guys, and you pick up the telephone, you call somebody up here, and they'll get you to the right person, and they'll find out that information for you. Don't ever hesitate to call somebody up here, because that's what we like doing. We like to help citizens and make you better understand what's going on. So don't ever hesitate if that ever happens again.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Do we have, do we have anybody else signed up? Now, I guess not, since it means only we didn't have any for us. I answered my own question on that one, by the way.
Did you want to answer questions?
Yeah, but she was asking about the footing of that development, if it's going to be extended any further. Brandy can answer those questions for us. You can answer it for her.
Sure, thank you, Councilmember Amburgi. I'm happy to answer that. So, you know, I think if this was raw land that we were looking at, proposed construction, there would be more of a concern about it being a domino effect and it really helping that next parcel in making the case. But being that this was a shopping center developed in the 80s, and it's there and established, and nothing's changing, I really don't think that that gives much weight to that first parcel. You know, that first parcel that develops with new construction, that would be the impact, and I can certainly see that case being made, for sure.
Well, Julie, I believe she's just saying nothing's going to change what it is existing now, right?
Correct.
It's just going to be the way it is now. There's no future plan for a development behind it or anything, or extend it out, she said. Is that good, Julie? The way it's built right now is the way it's going to, we're just changing the zoning, that's all.
So can I ask a question, if you don't mind?
Sure.
A couple clarifying questions. So this is not to build anything new, correct?
Correct.
This is because there is an error on the map where, when it was incorporated from Union County, it kept the original designation, but now we're trying to bring it in compliance.
Correct.
So the neighbors that have come that are living behind there, nothing's going to change except that that parcel is in compliance with the town's zoning map, correct?
Correct.
So the guy living next door cannot now come and say that he is in a business district because he's still residential. This is the only thing they're doing, changing the zoning.
Correct. And if you see this building, this portion of the building right here, it's here today, it's going to be here, nothing's being impacted, it's really just a change in the color on the map. Now, I would like to speak quickly about the notification. So we do have notifications that are required per the state and per our UDO as well, 500 foot, so not everyone gets notified, so that could be the reason, or it could have gone to, you know, the property owner if it's a tenant, for example.
Right.
Any other questions for Brandy?
No, sir.
Does that, did that help out any?
It does. It did. I think more of the neighborhood should have been notified because it is right in front of our neighborhood, but I guess I answered my questions.
All right. There's no other, there's no other speakers, there are no other speakers in here for it. I'd like to make a...
I'll make a motion to close the public comments.
Mr. McIntyre's made a motion to close public hearing. All in favor? Unanimous. I need a motion for the consistency findings.
I'll make a motion to adopt the statement of consistency as read into the record for petition ZM 2022-0008 by staff on March 8th, 2022.
Crystal's made a motion. All in favor? Unanimous? Okay. Okay, are we done?
No, resorting request.
Call for a motion to adopt the ordinance, 372.
Make a motion to adopt the ordinance, okay, I'm sorry.
Call for a motion.
All right. I'll make a motion for, to adopt the ordinance 03-08-2022, number 372, pertaining to petition ZM 2022-0008 regarding Union Festival Shopping Center.
Mr. McIntyre's made a motion. All in favor? Unanimous. Okay. Brandy, are you coming back?
I'll be glad to. So the next agenda item is our last public hearing of the night. It is a zoning text amendment, 2022-009. This is for vehicle sales in multi-tenant structures. So recently, a situation arose that brought our attention to a conflict between state law and our Unified Development Ordinance. The code sections impacts have been in place for some time, but evidence seems to point to an attempt to align with the state NCDMV requirements. So I was connected with the state law enforcement agent responsible for this area. We sat down, spent some time, looked at several properties and dealerships within the town limits to determine that our multi-tenant wording was not in compliance with the state. There was a request at the time to amend our code to align with the state's wording and also align with how the state interprets and enforces this particular division. This will avoid potential motor vehicle sales tenants from getting conflicting information or the town's regulations superseding the state unnecessarily. The requested action's before you tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does anybody have any questions?
Is that as a result of the change from the state where we had to go back and revisit some of our, this is a separate item, right?
Yeah. So Councilmember McIntyre, this was put in place years ago, prior to the 160D regulations, and the state talks about they're required to have, in order to issue a license for a vehicle sales location, there has to be separation between tenants. So an actual wall separation, like one tenant can't get to the records of titles and things like that, or I'm not renting an office from you, and then you have access to the titles and things of that nature. So the way that they enforce it, I think that our ordinance was written with good intent, but their interpretation and their enforcement doesn't really match up with ours, so...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we still have the existing, is it two acres or whatever in Indian Trail, or are you changing that, or?
No, we, as a planning staff, we love that two acres. Probably one of the biggest calls and customer folks who come in the office and ask questions is for vehicle sales, and that two acres has proved to be very valuable.
Any other questions?
Call for a motion to open.
I need a motion to, for open, for public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the public comment section for this request.
Unanimous. Do we have anybody?
I don't have anybody signed up.
Anybody here signed up to do that, to say anything? No?
I'll make a motion to close the public comment.
Can we please allow the mayor to call for a motion?
Thank you, Marcus.
Sorry, Councilmember.
Do I have a motion to close public hearing?
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
All in favor, Mr. McIntyre's made a motion to close. Unanimous.
Motion for the ordinance.
Okay, so I need a, I need a motion to...
You just need a motion?
To approve it, yes.
So I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 03-08-2022, number 373, pertaining to petition to, for ZT 2022-0009 regarding replacing misdemeanor language within the UDO.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre's made a motion. All in favor? Unanimous. Okay. That brings us to old business.
No old business.
There is no old, but there is no old business, so that brings us to new business. Crypto delegate appointment, Mayor Cone. The rules for the crypto require for the mayor to be the primary delegate of crypto. And do we need to vote on that, or is that just a...
You just need to announce that.
Just need to make that statement.
That's what the bylaws require, so we are moving forward with that.
Right, so from now on, I guess the mayor will be the crypto representative and...
Mr. Amburgi will remain as the...
Sure, Mr. Amburgi, you're going to be the, you're going to be the backup.
I'm your backup.
Okay, thank you. So with that being said, we don't need to vote on that. The NCLN voting delegate for the NCLN board member, does anybody want to volunteer for this?
And Mr. Mayor, that is the North Carolina League of Municipalities.
Pardon me, yes. Anybody want to do this? And if you would, tell them a little bit about what this is, because I'm afraid people here really don't, may not know what the, if you would.
The league has been around for over 100 years. It's actually got started as a collection of cities and towns and villages across North Carolina. And what they do is they work towards improving the quality of life and the quality of services of cities. They also, you get a weekly, or many of you should, everybody should be getting a weekly newsletter from the league as to what they've been working on. A lot of it deals with legislation. The other thing that the league is very good in is in doing various training, which this town and our employees take advantage of, and also their risk management services. It's a very good organization. I think about every city, town, and village in North Carolina as a member, any town of any size. They do have an annual conference in the spring. It's an excellent opportunity for those of you who would like to attend to get to meet some of the other elected officials across the state. And so if you're interested, I would encourage one of you to volunteer to be a delegate.
Do we have any volunteers? Crystal, you'll volunteer? Very good. Thank you, Crystal. So, Ms. Burcheck will be happy to do it, and we're happy to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That brings us down to C. Adam, ARPA funds uses, council suggestion, project submissions. Mr. McLamb?
How are you, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, this evening? Man, I thought we were running fast the last meeting. We're doing even better tonight. So we're here tonight to continue a conversation that we've been having for the last couple of meetings, and we're going to continue that conversation at our upcoming budget workshop this coming weekend. So tonight, what we're looking for is just a concurrence, just head nods from counsel. The list that you see up there is projects or agencies that we've heard from counsel already that they would like us to reach out to and start conversations with them on potentially using some of our ARPA funds that we are getting from the federal government for. Again, like I stated in the memo, and I want to state again here right now, just because their name is up there does not mean they qualify for ARPA funds. We still have to go through a very long process to come to that conclusion. And if there's any others, that's why it says others with a question mark.
Any questions for Mr. McLamb? No question? Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Make a comment or whatever.
Sure, go right ahead.
Okay. I know we've talked about this and talked to some other members up here, and I guess since you're looking for, to move forward, correct, as consensus is, I like to see the three fire departments, Henry Bridge, Bakers, and Stallings, we move forward into looking into fire equipment, specifically a fire truck for those three stations. I think we've, Mr., Crystal has reached out to the VFW, so I'm thinking we begin the process of dealing with the VFW, I think maybe 150,000 or so there. And I think we're looking at, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but we've heard from the Indian Trail Athletic Association, Porter Ridge Athletic Association, 150,000 each there to move forward with those. And I understand that we could possibly do building upgrades for the Union County Sheriff's Office IT building over here, and also the capital needs that the IT Division needs here. I think you've got that in here, correct? So that's the ones that I know of that I think where we've talked to the organizations, and they've reached out, and there's been communication, and that I'd like to see us move forward. move forward specifically with those organizations and needs, that, you know, and so I'm okay with those. Thank you, Mr. McLamb.
You said that...
Is that Tom?
I'm sorry. You said that it was a lengthy process for this, Adam?
Anytime you're dealing with, anytime you're dealing with federal government dollars, the process is very long, and that's, I don't really want to go into all that tonight. That's what we're gonna do on Saturday, is really lay out, like, some of the process that we're gonna have to go through for all of these funds.
Okay.
I mean, if you want to hear, I can walk through a little bit, but...
No, 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 no. I just, I just want to move swiftly as we've talked in the past. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Tom, especially since we're gonna do it again Saturday.
Exactly, so I'll swiftly talk about it then.
Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions? Dennis?
I've always had a question about the, the fire trucks and the fire department, and it comes from experience with my parents who were going through a lot of things at end of life, and each time that the E M Ts were called, the fire truck always showed up first, and it was always a huge fire truck, and I know they're what, three quarters of a million dollars, and so I always wondered, what, is there not something intermediate if the fire department has to show up first that we could, we could fund, you know, a smaller truck that does the same thing? So, I don't know if, if you could check with the fire departments if there is such a vehicle, but it always puzzled me that why we'd have a three quarters of a million dollar truck show up for every, every occasion when they, they possibly could have smaller units and more of them, so.
I'm listening, sorry, I was writing notes, so I'm listening to you.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry.
I think I'm taking a, a reading from the board that you would like us to start dialogue with those fire departments and athletic associations and the V F W, so we can start to get the, the train rolling. Is that correct?
That is.
Is a vote needed for that, Karen? There's, there's, um, concurrence, right? Everybody's...
Yeah.
Yeah.
When anything's normal, at least, I'm gonna support.
Disbursement of funds, that's when we will vote on it. Thank you.
Yes, yeah.
Correct.
There will need to be some agreements developed and signed, and at that point, you do the, the voting.
And just one comment, Mr. Cone, if I can make that, sir, please. Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment?
Sure.
Yeah, um, we expect staff to do their due diligence and to ensure that, um, all the Ts are crossed and all the Is are dotted, because it's federal government funds, but also we're public servants as well, and we operate in, on, in the public good. What, our rule up here is to do what benefits the general public. So, you know, we know that, that it, it may take some time. We ask you to move as, you know, swiftly as possible. However, doesn't mean that we're advocating, um, doing anything contrary to following the rules set forth by the federal government, especially dealing with these ARPA funds.
Right.
All right?
Yep.
Thank you.
Got it.
And if I can just add of importance is not only do we have to confirm that the money is ARPA eligible, but it, it must comply with state law, and so really, our real restrictions come at the state level more so than ARPA with regard to who is, can be a recipient of these funds, and so that's one issue we're gonna have to resolve in the course of our due diligence on this stuff.
So, miss, miss...
And that's, that's part of what we're gonna talk about on Saturday, is how that funnel funnels down, coming all the way to us.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor Cone?
Yes.
We do have a gentleman that would like to speak in the audience. This is council's meeting. It is not, um, it does not have to happen, but...
Mr. Dukes to come up and speak.
Absolutely.
I would like to just ask some question, would you like to...
Would you come up and speak in the microphone?
I'd like to ask you, okay, Adam, Adam, if you can stand right here. So, for those of us from the meeting that are not, uh, you know, cognizant of your conversation here, it would be very helpful for us to understand and have a little bit of history of A R P A. I'm assuming that is federal funding, but for most of us sitting here, how many know what A R P A is? So, it would be very helpful if you helped us in the audience to understand what that term means, how does it relate to us as residents, and what are you trying to accomplish here? I mean, I'm sitting here, and this is like Greek, so it would be very helpful. I'm just making a recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, and step back up there, Adam.
It's American relief funds from the federal government. We're getting twelve million dollars. Two million has a lot of really restrictive rules on it. The other ten million does have rules on it, and, uh, we're learning what the rules are and going through it. All we're doing right now is, is trying to instruct the staff to begin the process of looking into if we can help these specific items here. So, Union County, all the towns got this money, so there's a lot of rules on it. The town of Rockingham here in North Carolina bought a fire truck with the money, so that's something we know that you can use the funds for. Some of the money, like, we want to give to an athletic association, we have to get something in return by state law. So, we got state law, federal laws, you know, so we're sitting up here about half as confused as you are. So, they, uh, so, but it, it's just federal dollars that they, they, they've dished out. I think we've gotten six million in, we got another six million coming, so we're beginning the process of looking into what, how we can help the community. We can't give the money to an individual. State law presents, prevents us from giving it just to a business, so what we're doing is going through the process of trying to begin to find ways to get this money out into organizations in the community that we can help.
And it's time sensitive, right, Adam? It's time sensitive, Larry.
And I would assume, I see capital requests here, I know what that term means, so being you're adding value, you're not just giving it to a business or an organization.
Right.
That's correct.
And it's use it or lose it, basically.
Exactly, that's why...
Mr. Duke, would you please allow Mr. Cone to call and you to speak, please?
Town, the, you said time sense of it is, uh, by twenty twenty-four, December of twenty twenty-four, we have to have the money obligated, and by December of twenty twenty-six, we have to have all twelve million dollars spent, twelve mil, twelve million plus spent.
Very good.
Since you brought up the V F Ws, I think, is, correct me if I'm wrong, is, they, they want, they're looking like a new roof, and in return, as we would have to work out, maybe be able to use the facility, there's things trade off in there, just since you kind of asked that one, is a capital need, I think that's their capital need. Hmm, so, uh, does that answer your question better?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Duke.
Well, I think you did an excellent job in answering this question.
I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor.
And I appreciate that, and I thought, didn't you think Larry did an excellent job of answering that question? And Adam, you did an excellent job, too. Thank you very much.
Thank y'all for the consensus.
Thank you, thank you very much. Kathy, is it time to read the resolution?
Uh, you, you don't have to read the resolution. I think, um, Mr. McLaurin is just gonna speak to what it is, and then you will approve the resolution through a motion.
Okay, thank you.
As many of you know, and as we have talked about on a number of occasions, we've gotten some money from the North Carolina General Assembly. We've gotten ten million dollars to be used for transportation. We've got fifty thousand for economic development, and I think another two hundred and fifty thousand for parks and recreation. We were not unique in getting money from the legislature. It went to various towns all over the state. In order for us to accept the money, I need, and to open those accounts in the North Carolina Capital Management Trust Fund, where we put our idle funds, I need you to approve Resolution oh three oh eight twenty-two number one, and Jim is available to answer any questions that I cannot.
Okay, do we need a motion, I'm assuming?
We do. You need to call for a motion.
I need to call for a motion. Go ahead.
Um, I make a motion to adopt Resolution zero three two two dash two zero two two number one regarding opening N C C L M accounts.
Mr. McIntyre has made a motion. Everyone approve or disapprove? Approve, raise your hand. Disapprove? Dennis, you didn't?
Excuse me.
Which way did you go?
Approved. Yes.
Approved. Okay, unanimous. Okay.
Okay. Are we ready for the manager's update?
Yes.
Okay. It's good to be back. I want to give my appreciation to the council for the calls that, that I received from any of you, and also from the leadership that Adam provided while I was out. He and I spoke, I guess, every day or every other day, and he did a fine job, and I appreciate the staff carrying forward. For those of you that, um, have experienced this, it was quite a life-changing experience, but I've come from the dark side of the moon, so it feels pretty good. I do want to remind you, we do have a budget workshop this Saturday. Food will be Chick-fil-A, and we want to, this is one of two budget workshops. This will be a more high-level workshop where we will align what your priorities are, review of what projects we've got going on, where it's coming, you know, where we are with that, and then talk in general about what, uh, the staff is looking at for next budget year. And at the conclusion, get your feedback as to, are we proceeding in the direction that you would like to proceed? A couple of us, Captain James, and I think will be joining us via Zoom, and we certainly look forward to his presentation. Several of you will be going to the Essentials in Municipal Government on March twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. I'm very excited that you're going to the live session. If for some reason you can't make that training, there is training in the western part of the state, just let us know right away. Councilmember Amburgi brought up the railroad track on Indian Trail Road. We have reached out to C S X. Originally, they wanted to do it when we would do the Indian Trail Road project, but we've explained that they need to accelerate that. That is some safety issues, and we'll continue to stay on that. We've gotten, we are sad to lose Karen. Next meeting will be her last meeting. She has agreed to stick around to handle any last-minute contracts that she has been working on. We have received proposals from three law firms, all very qualified. I was gonna bring you copies on Saturday, but once I get a last bit of information, I'll send them to you electronically on Saturday. We need to schedule some time to discuss a special meeting, decide how we want to vet those proposals. You've been briefed on the surplus property for the Public Works Building. We'll continue to stay on that. We will also begin stormwater work beginning March twenty-first. We've gotten the notice to proceed on that. The R F Q for park design across the street is going out on Thursday. The last bit of information I have is that tonight, there were several comments made about some things we may want to do with our Facebook page and our website, excuse me, our website, and we'll be having a discussion on that tomorrow to see what we can incorporate. That's all the report I have, sir.
Any questions? No questions? Mr. McLaurin, thank you for your, for your update.
Yes, sir.
That brings us to council's comments.
Mr. McIntyre.
Um, thank you, Karen. I want to say just a few things. I know tonight, some people came in and they spoke, which is good to see people coming in and questioning and talking directly to their elected, um, officials. Um, I've known David Cone for a long time. He's the first person that I knew who was on council, and I've known him to be a man of integrity, an honest person, who told me when he was running, what he was running for, what he supported, and right now, I've seen these things happen in town. So, when I heard, you know, things being discussed about he being a high-density person, that is far from the truth. But I allowed him to speak for himself because I know he can. We all sit up here, we make decisions based on what we think is in the best interest. It is easy to stay out there and say, somebody does this or somebody does that, but I want to remind people that we, nobody's sitting here looking for more traffic. We're all here looking to try and find funds to improve roads, to attend meetings, to make sure that we pester the, um, elected officials in Raleigh, or the federal government to try and give us monies to build the roads, widen the roads, and so forth. Indian Trail being as, you know, the twenty-fourth largest town within, um, the state of North Carolina, we are limited in some of the, um, projects that we can get. We compete with Charlotte a lot and some of the surrounding towns, so it's very difficult for us to get funding for some of these, but we all do this with the best interests of the town. So, that's my little piece here. The rest of it is, staff, I appreciate your efforts tonight and keeping us informed, trying to keep the meeting moving. And as always, um, Mr. McLaurin, welcome back. It's good to have you here. Captain, you and your team, you all do a very good job within the town. Appreciate that. Everybody else, have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. Wish us luck on the budget with, um, energy prices soaring through the roof. It's gonna be, uh, it's gonna be a turkey shoot trying to figure out how to come up with numbers, I think, for the next, uh, next year or so, but, um, anyway, I hope, uh, if anybody's interested, I hope you'll, uh, they can all attend the, the budget process, can't they? And so, learn more about the town, and, um, everybody be safe going home. Thank you.
I just want to thank everyone again for coming out tonight. Thank the staff for doing such a great job, and of course, Mike, welcome back. I hate to be losing Karen, but you've done a wonderful job for the time I've been here. Again, thank you all for coming.
Mr. Amburgi.
Yeah, I'd like to say glad to have you back, Mike, and sad to see you go, um, because since I've been here, you've been nothing but professional. But I do agree with Larry that, you know, some people are gonna see some projects that are ten, eleven years old that hadn't even begun, you know, that are high-density, or perhaps, you know, an apartment complex or what have you. I'd like to see that on the internet, on our website also. Brandy, maybe we could put a spreadsheet out there. Is it on there? Okay, it's updated.
Yes, I can hear it now.
All right, so maybe, um, if we get that website a little more user-friendly, perhaps, I don't know. I looked at it a few times, and, but, um, you know, I, I can't disagree with the way it looks personally now. But with that being said, um, I appreciate everyone coming tonight, and God bless everyone. Have a good evening.
Mr. Barber.
Well, uh, as far as Mayor Cone, I, I'll be the first to admit I was under a lot of pressure to vote for him. My wife told me to vote for him, hmm, so, hmm, so we're glad to have you, though. The, uh, so, and, uh, Ms. Walter, you've been wonderful, and I hope we can, I don't know the odds, I'll find another honest attorney, so we'll see. But, um, uh, I do thank Mr. Kramer and the parks and everybody, that I thought the touch of truck, um, thing was awesome. We had a great crowd. Congrat, thank you for doing that. Went off real well. I would do, I do want to give a shout out to Senator Todd Johnson, U S Representative Dean Arp, and U S Representative David Willis. If you were sitting here and you saw what we just approved, the money going to the bank, ten million of that money is, they got out of the state budget for Indian Trail, on top of what the D O T does and everything else is, this money's coming in, and everybody talks about traffic and transportation, but ten million of that money is earmarked to help the transportation and road needs on Indian Trail. So, I think those three elected officials went to bat for us, and, and I think the citizens and everybody should be very grateful for what they did. They also got a grant for some park money that's going, and I think we're looking at doing it, that they're laying over near Holly Park. I think the, there was a sign of some pickle court, pickleball courts, and I've never even seen pickleball, but I understand it's one of the fastest-growing sports in the country, so, um, maybe Mr. Cone can teach us how to play, so. The, uh, also, I do have some exciting news, and I appreciate Mr. Kramer working with the Lions Club, but if you've ever seen the Lions Club, sometimes we bring the Vision Van in, so Premier Family Eye Care will be working with the Lions Club, and we will be having the, at June fourth, at the Family Fun Day, the Lions Club will have the Vision Van there, and we'll be offering free hearing and vision screenings at that. So, uh, thank you, Mr. Kramer, for fitting that in, because I know that's a big vehicle. So, I wanted to give you a big shout out to the Lions Club and everybody working with that, and Dr. Young over there at Premier Family Eye Care and her staff for helping us out. Other than that, welcome back, Mike. You could've stayed out longer. You know, the temp over there did a good job, too, so, but we're glad to have you back, but, you know, other than that, thanks, everybody. Have a great evening.
Mayor Cone.
I think that's very important, what Todd just said about thanking our representatives. That's a lot of money, and that's, uh, you know, we should be very grateful for, for what they did. I know I am, and if we can all maybe call up and say thank you, that, that might be a, a good thing to do. Also, Brandy did a good job, very, as usual, tonight. Did it, Mike, welcome back. Glad you're back.
Sure.
Adam, I understand you did a great job, uh, as, as normal. I think you're the second-longest-tenured employee here, uh, so, uh, you've been here a while. Kramer, I mean Hayden, don't want to call you Kramer, Hayden. Wonderful job Saturday, wonderful. Three thousand people is a lot of people, and, uh, you handled it well, and everybody had a good time. I'm glad, I'm glad you're back, Mike, and, uh, I just want to let everybody know, I'll, I'll make mistakes. I'll make mistakes up here, and, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna repeat what I used to say a long time ago. I used to say I was the dumbest guy in the room, but one, one thing that I can always I used to say I was the dumbest guy in the room, but one thing that I can always promise is I'll tell the truth. I don't know anything else but to tell the truth, and you won't have to worry what I tell you. And I'll work extra hard for you, and, you know, if you have a doubt, ask me. I'll be happy to tell you. With that being said, I thank all that are, that were here tonight. I hope you come back. You don't have to come back just when you have your concern, we're just good to see, we're just happy to see you. So come back and see us, and I hope to see you next time, if you want to come Saturday.
One quick thing, in light of what the mayor pro tem said, we will be extending an invitation to our local delegation to come to a council meeting for y'all to publicly thank them for their work in providing for Indian Trail.
That's a great idea. Thank you. With that being said, I'll see you next time. So I need a, I need a motion to, see, I'm going to sit here and wait for the mayor to tell me. This is my first time being up here, I'm waiting for the mayor to do this, so. Oh, I am the mayor, wait a minute, let's see. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved, motion to adjourn.
McIntyre made a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Hit the gavel. Hit the gavel.